I pray that as they do that, that you will help them to be the very best public servant. I pray that you'll give them wisdom that they need so that when they make decisions, they're thinking about everybody who has impacted other citizens as best as they can to figure out how do we do things that are in the best interest of all of the citizens of this county. Thank you for the resources that you have entrusted to us. And I pray, Father, we'll be capable and wise stewards of those resources, that we will be fair in how we utilize those, that we will recognize that those are provided to us in trust and that we have a responsibility to do that well. I pray, Father, for our law enforcement and our emergency responders. Lord, they're called on all of the time to step into dangerous situations. I praise you for them and I thank you for them and I ask you to bless them. At this time of year especially, give them a very merry Christmas season, Lord, Christ is with you.
Thank you, Mr. Schley. Right off the bat, when we're here, we want to recognize Monterey Volunteer Fire Department. At this time, if Mr. Ricky Brown, Mr. Loney, and Andrew, if y'all would just come forward, we've got something we want to present y'all for the work and some life-saving equipment for y'all. Justin, if you'd come forward? Hey, Justin, if you'll just make a few comments on the machine itself and what it does.
So, good morning, gentlemen. So, we've got a cardiac monitor here. These guys are familiar with it. They've seen them, been met paramedics for a while. This gives our paramedics in the county... I'll get up. Man, I'm wired up here. Our paramedics in the county, the ability to get some even more patient care further out. They don't have to wait on an ambulance to get there.
Of course.
Gives them some tools to do some diagnostic stuff quicker. An investment the county's made in all of our citizens just for their safety. So, it gives them, particularly this machine, got a defibrillator made into it, but especially so the ability to do an EKG, detect if they're having a heart attack or not. So, it kind of gives that advance warning. We can make phone calls to the hospital, kind of get things going a little bit quicker. They'll start delivering some care a lot faster. So, one of those things that the board and the county has invested in, a really, really useful item for our citizens.
Well, and I know Monterey is a pretty active volunteer fire department. I think so far, they've already had over seven hundred calls this year alone. And we appreciate everything that y'all do for Rankin County. And this is just something that all our volunteer fire departments need. And we just appreciate y'all. So, if y'all would just come up here and let's get a picture. I think y'all got somebody who want to take a picture, maybe Chuck could take a picture for us also.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, man.
Hi, thank y'all.
I kind of want to go into executive session pretty fast.
Now?
Yeah. I'll bring it up, just give me a window to talk about it.
You want after public comment?
Yeah, whenever you... Well, yeah. When you get some public comment before... Yeah, I let public comment go and then can you get that one out?
All right. I guess we fix to move on to public comments. Now, I got three sheets of paper up here with a lot of names and a lot of them's here for the rezoning, but anyone other that would like to come up and speak in public comment, be a good time to do it and just state your name and your address. And try and give us some holiday cheer. It's holiday season, we just need some cheer.
Well, Merry Christmas.
All right, thank you.
Happy New Year.
That's a good start.
Thank you for helping me get the map. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I wish, uh, good morning, gentlemen. I wish to say ladies and gentlemen, but you're an all male panel, so good morning. Thank you for what you do. And so, I know you've got a full agenda this morning, so I'll try and be brief.
All right. What's your name one more time?
I'm sorry, Camille Wright, live at one fifty Basswood Circle, Brandon, Mississippi, which is in the third district.
Fourth district.
Gaines? Okay.
That would be Mr. Gaines' district.
But you can have three or four, whichever one you'd like to talk to, Brad or Gaines, two of them.
So, across the highway twenty-five is two or three?
It's three. Portions of it's in two and portions of it's in four. None of it's in three. Now, I'd be glad to give Mr. Calhoun portions of twenty-five if he'd like it, but depending on which way you run up twenty-five...
Is that your district?
I don't know. I had to look it on the map. That's all right.
All right, so Holly Bush and twenty-five, what that where?
So, part of...
If it is the boundary, so...
Correct. So, if you go right on twenty-five, that's Mr. Gaines. And if you go left, it's probably going to be me, unless you go north of forty-three. District two would be, so if you're south of forty-three, left of twenty-five, right? On the west side of twenty-five, south of forty... All right, so if you're... Do it now?
Eastern way.
Yeah, so if you're running up highway twenty-five, let's just say it's running north, right? It's probably definitely not, but let's just say it's running north. So, if you get to forty-three, north of forty-three is Mr. Gaines, south of forty-three and west of twenty-five is district two.
That means the left side, west be on the left.
So, if you're going north, if you're driving north, right? Driving up it, so on the right side of twenty-five would be Mr. Gaines.
Okay, two and three.
Yes, ma'am. Two and four.
Two and four.
Two and four.
Three is over there in...
Three, three way across.
I just helped you get the map and that's district three.
Okay, I'm gonna say...
Yeah, hey, that's good over there.
I think I can work with that. All right, so, all right, so I live in a tiny little subdivision called Basswood, uh, which is on the south side of Holly Bush Road. And it is on the east side of highway twenty-five, which is in State Gaines' district.
District number four.
Okay. I've been a resident of Rankin County since nineteen eighty-six, homeowner the whole time. So, I'm not a newcomer. I've lived in the northwest Rankin area that whole time. I've lived in the State Gaines district since two thousand and five, so about seventeen, eighteen years. This area has grown as everybody is, you know, especially in Gaines' district exponentially. I mean, in every way, commercially, residential, and, uh, but I'm addressing residential needs this morning. So, uh, ever since I've been on State Gaines' district, I've not seen any improvements for residential purposes, not, not any, uh, green areas, no fire station, no recycling, there's nothing. But it seems like the county is much more receptive to assisting businesses than it is taxpaying homeowners. That's just my observation because, uh, because of a lack of these investments, of these structures. And I know, I, I, I'm here this morning, but I know I speak for thousands of people in that area that share my same feelings. And I feel like, I think that that area, even though it is, it should be, it's small, it's, there's, the population is so dense now that it really should be incorporated, but, you know, that's not my call. Because, uh, you know, we still need fire protection, which we now have because, only because, not because of you guys, but because of the fire chief at Spielway. And he said, y'all wanted him to take in some area along Old Fanning, and he said, "Not gonna do it until you take in that area where I am." And so, you did, you allowed it, which made, which caused our, um, fire rating to go down and I'm, I'm personally saving money every year now. So, um, that, that's my beef here, the point, but the, the, so... There are things that the county's already tasked with doing that it is not doing, such as keeping the right-of-way clean along Holly Bush Road. There are always these tacky plastic signs. It's not allowed in state right-of-way, it's not allowed in, uh, where's the sign? It's not allowed at state right-of-way and it's not allowed in county right-of-way, right?
I assume M.D.O.'s been addressed about whatever's in state right-of-way?
This is not M.D.O. right-of-way, this is county right-of-way.
Well, we got state aid roads, all of those, state aid, all state aid.
So, that would apply to...
They tell us what we can and cannot put in, in the state aid by what? So, you might want to check, make sure that you're not asking these guys...
Well, I'm asking you...
No, 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 let me finish. You might want to check before you ask these guys to take responsibility for a road that may be controlled by state aid, so why don't you go to them first?
Is there a difference between county, county?
Go check with state aid and then come back and talk to this board.
There is a difference.
It's really important to know your facts before you start accosting this board.
I'm not accosting the board.
It's very important. So, I'm not gonna let you do it personally. They, they may be willing to sit up there and tolerate it, but I'm not, I'm not. So, go check with state aid and then come back and talk to me about that.
We'll do it. We'll do it. I'll make an appointment with you. So, uh...
Now, you can call.
You know, like I said, you know, that it's, the, the litter is not picked up as it should be. The mowing is, I think, twice a year, so it always looks unkept. So, it doesn't matter, you know, what kind of fantastic developments there are out there. You know, if you've got a trashy road, uh, unkept road, it's a reflection on the entire community.
All right, ma'am.
And I know I'm not just talking...
All right, let me speak a little bit now because, I mean, you... We got three buses of trustees every day that leads this county and goes out and picks up trash. We don't never see any volunteers out there, communities joining in in the help of keeping our roads clean. We're not riding around throwing the trash out. So, I mean, it's people that lives on y'all's roads that's throwing the trash out. But I never see any of the residents out there picking up trash. Now, Sheriff Bailey, he gives us trustees and we hire three drivers to drive the trustees around. It'll be ten to fifteen of them each day picking up garbage throughout the county, non-stop. So, I mean...
I'm, I, I, I agree. And it's sad that we live in a society that is so trashy and just, you know, throws it out, you know, at will.
But we gotta get the communities involved on this.
You gotta understand that to these guys, uh, as far as trash goes, you got like twelve hundred road miles that they try to tend to.
It's a big county.
It is. And, and, uh, on bad days, bad weather, obviously they can't come out, cold weather, they can't come out because, you know, if they get sick, your tax dollars, mine, are gonna have to pay to put them in hospital, whatever. But we're blessed that they do come out because really it's kind of on a voluntary basis. It's not like it's something they're made to do, that, that you can make them by law.
To Brad's point, I think we're doing our part, aren't we? And I think the county is doing its part.
We're trying, we are trying, and I agree, but your, your problem is not just isolated into your one spot. And I'm saying it's, it's not a problem, but we all experience throughout the whole county. And, and it's just human nature for everybody to see their road or their roadside and say that's the worst one around. Really, we're trying everything we can to get the garbage picked up, but the sad thing is just what you said. It's an individual effort, should be, have respect for where you live and respect for the other people around you. And I, I can give you a list almost every time, if I want to call in once a month and say, I can go and add these roads to the list because I promise you they're gonna be on that list and they're gonna pick them up. And I'll be right back picking them up. It, it's a sad situation, I don't know how to correct it.
I mean, and, and I mean, we get calls every day on, hey, pick up this road, pick up this road. We get it picked up. They always call to complain, but they never call and say, "Man, appreciate y'all picking the trash up." It's none of that. We always get, hey, it's...
I will tell you about an individual that picked up, start running road, twelve bags he had out there. Mike, I called you one evening, I said, "Ma'am..." He said, "I didn't have time to get them all, pick them all up, could y'all do it?" We did it early that next morning for dogs, so I'm gonna scatter them out. But that individual picked up twelve bags on Star River Road. Sure did.
It's, it's really sad.
That's how awful it is.
So, I'm, you know, there has to be a better collection of this. I don't, I'm not sure what that, I don't know if it's education, I don't know if it's penalties, I don't, I don't know, it's a combination of a lot of things, you know?
Yeah, yeah, signs out says, "No lift, no, uh, no dumping, no trash."
And these signs, these trashy looking signs. You know, that people are getting to advertise for free. So, you know, if they wanna, it's like they're doing it and, and they probably, I don't know if they know if it's illegal or not, but it's, uh, I wouldn't think that they could do the road maintenance with those in place. And I will definitely check with state aid to see if it's accounted.
See what road it is, the state aid is, is interacting, interacting in some of our roads that you think would be rural, but they are state aid.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure Holly Bush is because you just three, three lanes, Holly Bush Road from the intersection to the front line, that's the only improvement that I've seen in that district, in that area, since I've lived there these past seventeen years. The only, you know, a hit.
Steve, do you remember how much we spent on Holly Bush Road front?
Over a million.
It was way over, way over a million, yeah. But we had, before that, we had added a turn lane.
Yes, sir.
And then we upgraded the lights before that.
Yes.
It's been pretty, ever since the population started growing, we've tried to keep up with it.
And these guys are doing everything they can with the amount of folks that are moving in out there and, and I mean, so they, they doing what they can with the money that we are budgeted each year for each district and they doing everything they can out there.
Uh, we are, yeah, Rankin County is growing by leaps and bounds, I understand. And, you know, uh, I don't, like I said, I don't know if it, if the law will allow us to penalize people that are sticking these signs out or if, or in the front...
What kind of signs you talking about, just a yard sign type deal?
Businesses and for politicians and for, you know, all that stuff.
Ma'am, I appreciate your comments, but I got three pages and I got a lot...
I understand, I understand.
Forty people that are wanting to speak.
Okay. Thank you very much for hearing me and, uh...
All right.
Thank you.
I just feel like after seventeen years, I'm, I'm, you know...
We appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Anytime y'all want to, uh, pick up garbage out there on the side of the road, we'll get a patrol deputy out there to make sure y'all are safe and we'll have someone out there to make sure nobody hits y'all.
In fact, we've had a, a group that's done that, I just thought about it, in my district. They had the, they set up a time to do it and the sheriff came out and just set up to slow traffic down and they picked up, I don't know, mile of road or whatever, the people that live there, they picked it up themselves to help. Cause they said, "We, y'all pick it up, two days later it's back out. Then you can't get there quick enough to do it again, so we're gonna do it in between." And that's what they did.
All right, let's, let's move on.
Again, that's the same situation. The burden or the, the penalty should be on the person that did it, is my, my... You violate the law, it's against the law.
Get you a, get you a picture of a tag, get you a picture of somebody throwing it out.
If we, if we can get a snapshot of somebody that's actually in the process of doing it, I think we could, if anybody gets a tag...
Which setting's up?
Catch them in the act. And if that individual is willing to participate in prosecution, that's the other piece of the puzzle that we often see fall away. It's the person that takes the picture has got authenticated in the courtroom. So, oftentimes we'll find folks that'll send something to us and say, "Can y'all handle this?", but they don't want any part of that prosecution piece and each year it's targeted. Unless you get all of those puzzle pieces together...
One more question. As far as the issue is that when a person is brought up on litter and it's, they're there in front of a judge for, you know, something else, but more times, likely than not, that judge will dismiss the, uh, charge of litter and that is adding to the problem. So, people feel...
Let's get it, let's try it anyway.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
All right. Next on the list, I think I got Bob Sanders that signed up, let's see outside, something to do with the, uh, Stone Bridge pit.
Yes, sir. He, he may be here for, uh, for what's on the agenda under my section, Brad.
Okay.
That, that page long deal, item L under my section, that's probably why Mr. Sanders is here.
Just see, we, he just need to wait till...
He can come in when we bring, when we bring the, the other folks in here in a minute.
All right. Is anyone else here to speak in public comment? Apparently not.
I'm not sure because I asked to be put on the agenda to make sure, you know, so I don't know if I'm...
Did you sign up, ma'am?
Yes, I did.
And what's your name?
Kimberly Devine.
Yeah, I think she's only one, the rest of them's on rezoning.
We need to get the rezoning deal, we, we need those folks to come on in. Because I, I'd like to address the board before we get too far in the agenda, but my thought was, guys, that we could get through the agenda up to my section maybe and then get all those folks in here and discuss why all of the pile of the folks are here and get that handled.
Hey, Schley, I, I've got, I, I got, I was just sitting here looking through this stuff. I, I want to make a, a change if the president will let me. I want to go into executive session right now for personnel. So, I, I'd like to change that up and go into it, make a motion just to, if, if they're done with public comments or whatever they're gonna say at that point, before we go to item five under old business, I want to go to executive session for personnel. So, if you're done with public comments... Well, I mean, it, I'm, I'm not gonna...
Can I get the public comments over with first?
Yes.
All right, step forward, sir. Three minutes, please.
Well, I don't know if I'm here for a public comment or not, but, um, I received a letter about a, an nuisance property that I don't...
We, we have a nuisance consideration that's coming up under my section of the agenda.
It'll be a little later.
What we, is that, am I, do we have a nuisance?
I'm not sure if it's the, may I see your letter, please?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's, this is the one under your section.
All right, that's gonna be a little later on in the day.
Yeah, what, let, let's see what's fixing to happen here.
All right. Ma'am, public comments? Do you have, you have anything?
You, yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm not sure, you just said, I, I, you said I was on the agenda.
You're on public comment. You want to do public comment?
You on public comment?
Come on up.
Yes, ma'am. We got, we got three minutes because we got a board full.
We got, you said we got a lot of people.
I, I don't know about that, but I'm telling you because I asked to be put on the agenda.
I'm gonna say right now, it's, it's gotta be three minutes.
Okay, well, if you want three minutes, I came in here at the last meeting about the septic policy. Kimberly Devine, D.E.V.I.N.E., two ninety-eight Taylor Lane, Brandon, Mississippi. I live in the rural part of the county. I'm here about a three acre plot that my mobile home has been on for two years now and I have no lights because the county keeps telling me that they don't have anything to do with the exemption that the state grants and the state is telling me they can't grant the exemption for my lights because the county won't accept the exemption. And so, I'm just trying to get to the bottom of who can, who can, um...
What exemption are we talking about?
The two acre exemption.
Huh?
Are you not familiar with it?
We don't have it.
Okay, well, the state has two acre exemption for the on-site wastewater management that my lights are being held hostage for, that I'm not able, that I've not been able to get any light.
You can't get your lights turned on until the city is approved by the health department.
Okay, well, the health department, I'm telling you, sir, has told me they do have an exemption. I have, I have it right here. They have an exemption.
Has it been approved by the health department?
Has it been approved by the health department?
They said they won't do it because, because the county doesn't accept the exemptions. So, I'm so, but I came here last, the last meeting and you said that the county does not have anything to do with it, but they're telling me specifically that it's specifically Rankin County.
Who's telling you that?
The health department. You can call anybody. Matter of fact, I talked to Byron Tiller, I talked to Ann Hope, love, these are supervisors at the, um, at the Mississippi State Department of Health. You can call any general employee, you can call the line right now. And everybody, I guess they're having so many problems with this, is that they're gonna like put all the blame on the county, they're gonna say...
That's fine, we, we'll take...
We're used to that.
Yeah, we're used to it.
Let me, let me make a suggestion, um, and I don't know whether this is better to ask Renee to do it or to ask Kathy to do it. I'd like for either Kathy or Renee to go with Ms. Devine right now out into the hall and to call the State Department of Health and get to the bottom of this back and forth. The problem is, Ms. Devine is being forced to come and tell y'all about the conversation she's having with the health department and they aren't here.
We need to build an department involved.
We need the building department and the health department to get on the same page and figure out why is there a problem here?
Right.
And then let's address what both of those parties here decide is the problem.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
I agree.
Kathy's gonna go out there with you, Ms. Devine?
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Let's, let's get to the bottom of it if we possibly can.
That's the best way.
Okay, thank you.
And then what we can do, guys, is if we can get an answer, even if the answer is we think we gonna, we gonna have to have some time to get an answer, we'll, we'll report that back in here when they get to the bottom of it.
Ma'am, I think she's gonna go out there with you now.
Is anyone else here to speak other than on the rezoning? But, well, I mean, yours is different. All right. Daniel, are you still?
Yeah, unless, unless Schley wants to say something on the rezoning.
Yeah.
I just don't want to go any further down the agenda without doing this.
Gentlemen, if I, if I may, this is typically, I don't speak in public comment unless I'm chirping or barking from over here in my chair, uh, hearing that, but typically I'm not the person addressing the board. But this, this is probably the appropriate time on our agenda for us to address one matter that I think is probably the, what would be, end up being the central focus of a matter that is before you later on the agenda. So, at this point, it's good to go ahead and just have kind of a general conversation about the specific issues that have to do with development activity, uh, in Rankin County and in particular areas of the county where we're seeing significant development activity that is bringing, uh, change to the character of the, of the neighborhood, so to speak. It's bringing about fairly significant change to the, to the manner in which most of the land in that area has typically been used in the past. Uh, and so what, what that does is it introduces, and it's not unexpected, but what it does is it introduces what we refer to as development pressure that leads to infrastructure challenges for the county. Uh, and so that's what we're seeing, uh, and, and nobody is unaware. It's not like we were surprised to learn that when you introduce some level of residential development, of commercial development to an area that has not had any development activity in the past, you're gonna have some infrastructure challenges that result from that. And so that's, that's where we find ourselves. Uh, and this is not just in one particular area of the county. This is happening in many areas of the county where we have what I'll classify as typically rural, agricultural in nature, land uses, whether it be row crop or timber, cattle production, chicken houses, all of, all of the typical agricultural uses that we have seen in the past where those are getting converted over to residential character. Uh, and so what, and we're also seeing some significantly large commercial landowners who are, uh, no longer interested in being in the timber business, for instance. And, uh, they are selling off significant tracts of what has been undeveloped raw land or timberland, uh, and, and so that proposes, uh, a use of the property that's gonna change. And so we're seeing that, we're aware of that and, and we're taking steps to try to address those challenges as best we can. And so when individual developments come before us for consideration, we're now being forced to think about those proposals in a much different way than we have in the past. And so, uh, we have folks here today who are, that they're here on a particular matter, but, but their interests are gonna continue to be similar as we continue, this will not be the last development that's proposed, is my point. So, these are gonna be challenges that we have to continue to face as we go forward in the future. One piece of that is drinking water and infrastructure associated with drinking water. I want to start and be very clear about something. Rankin County and the Rankin County Board of Supervisors has nothing to do with providing drinking water to residents of Rankin County. That's a misunderstanding that we frequently encounter. Rankin County and the Rankin County Board of Supervisors has nothing to do with providing drinking water to the citizens of Rankin County. That is done primarily by municipalities. If the, if the, those being served with drinking water who live inside of a municipality, that water service, almost one hundred percent of the time, I won't say one hundred percent of the time, but almost one hundred percent of the time, is provided by that municipality. When you leave a municipal boundary and you go out into unincorporated county, that water service is typically provided, if it is provided, it is provided by a private nonprofit water association. We have them all over the county, by various descriptions. And that private water association provides drinking water to the residents within a boundary that is defined by the Public Service Commission, called a certificated area. And residents who are seeking water within the area that is certificated have the requirement to first go to that water association and secure water, drinking water, at their residence. A lot of these water associations have a certificated area that includes areas that are raw land. But some of these areas are large in their scale, thousands of acres of property of certificated area for a given water association. And so, that association through its governance, which is typically a board that is elected from the members of the association, they will consider issues like, okay, we have this area of, this certificated area, and we are being asked to provide water in a particular direction. What does our system, our water system, what does it provide for, what does it allow for? Do we have adequate resources to be able to extend that water supply to that area? The county is not involved in those decisions. And it's a decision done, made by a private water association, their board, and they make those decisions on the basis of multiple bases. Number one, is it inside of our area, number two, do we have the resources, number three, what exactly is being requested of us, number four, how does our system handle that from the standpoint of, we have requirements and regulations that the State Department of Health forces on us to meet? Like, minimum pressures in their water lines, adequate fire hydrants where those are called for, how do they interrelate with fire services, and other things. While we are not in the business of telling waters, private water associations, what to do and when and how, we do have to work with them, and this is where I, this is what I wanted to highlight here today. What we're finding is that our current responsibilities that we put on our developers when they come to us to talk about a development, our current regulations require our development community, our developers, to secure from an appropriate water association some form of written assurance that once this new development is online, given water association will provide water. We just, we ask for written assurance that the developers responsible to give to us. Or we don't move forward with consideration of the developers' requests until we have that written assurance. Everybody tracking with that? What we, and I think, I'm looking at Tim, because I want to make sure that, that you can be in agreement with what I'm about to say. We, we have felt historically that that has been adequate, just asking for written assurance. We, historically, we have believed that that was, that was enough. You get a letter from the water association, the governance of the water association, and they say, we intend to serve this new development that y'all are considering approving. We intend to serve them with, with adequate drinking water. That's been good enough for us in the past.
And they work out a deal with the developer to come up with the funds.
That's a good point, Brad, I, we, we don't make the developer do anything in particular or make any promises. He, he, the developer, he or she, the developer, must get with the, the appropriate water association and work out whatever details are required as it relates to how that water supply is gonna get to that development. Yes.
I have areas that there is no water association.
Yes sir.
People are on their own, they have wells.
Yes sir.
And, so that is still another thing that we deal with.
That's another option, it's the most costly option for the property owner, obviously.
It is.
Because they've got to secure a, a private party to come in and actually drill the well.
Maintain it.
And maintain it, and, and all the things that go with well supply. But yes, that is, that is a way that property owners can handle their own water supply, so to speak, and not have to interact with a water association at all. Uh, they can also do that, by the way, inside of a certificated area, should they choose to do so, and if the water association is willing to let them provide their own supply through well water, they can do it. Yes sir. So, there's, there's a number of ways that water can be supplied. At the, the point I'm trying to make here is that the county is not in the position of being able to provide it. It's not, we're not legally authorized to do it. Uh, and so, that's, that's an important consideration here that needs to be understood. So, what are we doing, uh, and, and let me add this. One event, recent event in particular, is sort of driving this. Uh, and so, we want to highlight that situation so that the folks here can understand just the depth at which the county is now has this sense that we need to be involved in these issues more directly. We recently had a situation where a developer asked for permission to build a development in a, I'll call it a rural area, okay? A substantially undeveloped, developed residential area. Uh, and we knew that at that point, when we were considering this development on the front end, we knew that water supply, public, I'm sorry, uh, drinking water supply was gonna be an issue. And so, we required the developer to do our normal thing, provide the assurance letter from the appropriate water association that water would be supplied. The developer received an assurance letter from a water association. And so, we allowed the developer to proceed, and he did. And he went really fast in constructing homes. The water association, although they indicated their assurance that they will supply water, was overwhelmed by the speed at which this development came online, and they were not successful in extending their water supply so that water could be supplied to that development. The developer sold houses that had no drinking water. It's my understanding that some of those homeowners had already sold their current house and had no drinking water at their new house. And were in a situation where they were trying to move into a newly constructed house with no drinking water. No toilets, no sink, no ice maker. No water. And so, when, when this information came to our attention, we, we kind of started putting two and two together. If all that we require of the water association is an assurance letter, we're probably not getting enough assurance for us to be able to say, okay, mister developer, it's time for you to move forward. We think we need more than just a written assurance letter. Some things that we thought about getting from the water associations is some sort of timeframe under which they intend to get the service extended to the development. You gotta go farther, instead of just saying, yeah, we're gonna eventually get water there, we want to know more about, when are you gonna have the water supply up there? And, and that's gonna require the water associations to be much more vigilant about how they're gonna get the water extended. They're gonna have to have a meeting of their board, they're going to have to hire, retain, or otherwise, uh, provide an authorization for whoever their engineer is to start designing the plans and specifications for extending the water service to a given development. So, before we move much more quickly now with new requests for additional developments, before we move very quickly, we are asking the board for permission to upgrade our policies and procedures on this specific issue, and there will be other issues, not just water, but on this specific issue, we need to upgrade what we're asking and requiring the developer to provide, and what we're looking for from the water association.
Craig.
Yes.
I believe that the most of these people are concerned about what their pressure is going to be after the development. They're already online, and they want some assurance from a water association that if you add thi- this number of outlets, that they still will have a, an acceptable. And we haven't drilled down that far.
Yes sir.
But this isn't a political stunt for me. We required, we, their engineer and us, our engineer, required an eight inch line down that area, down that road, for the people that are there now.
Yeah.
We are drilling down deeper because it's been brought to us, what you said, we never experienced that before. Uh, it's, but we, we will, and anyhow. I think that's, I, I think that is a concern, not that whether or not they'll provide water to the new houses, but what is it gonna do to existing?
And, and that's an excellent point, Steve. You know, it's really easy for us, quite honestly, it's easy for us and it's easy for the water associations when it's the first development in an area.
Yeah.
It's really simple.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's not, uh, there's no pressure to be monitored at that point, right? So, whatever pressure comes online is the first time that they've had to actually measure it in that area. So, water associations are gonna be challenged to understand more and more and more about their system and how it is likely to behave as additional outlets come online. We agree with concerns that have been raised, it is a legitimate concern. Are we gonna be able to maintain adequate pressure, that's a legitimate concern. Can we make sure that we don't damage an existing system by bringing more and more development activity at a point in time when it's challenging? That, you know, the water associations do, they'll tell us, we're doing everything we can with the resources we have, and, you know, they haven't told us yet, hey, please, hold up on more development activity until we can catch up. But I suspect that we're gonna hear that.
It could come.
Right, and so, uh, so that's where it becomes an issue for us to make sure that we have a plan in place. One, one part of our plan, again, is simply to ask the questions on the front end. What conversations have you had with the water association? And are they in a position to be able to extend the service to this location and adequately supply the number of residences that you are proposing to have constructed? That is a legitimate question to ask. And a follow-up is, how quickly will you be able to have that in place? And we haven't been asking that depth of detail up to this point. So, this is a good opportunity for us to let everybody know that's here today, that was here on one particular matter. This is an issue that we are addressing.
They have other layers that they would like to address later on. I don't even know if anybody's told, the application has been pulled. So, we're not having that review today. Last minute deal, uh, he's gonna wait until he has some conversations evident, well, he has had a conversation, I'm sure, with the water, but until he can provide written documentation.
Yes.
So, you're saying the public hearing is postponed until we get proper documentation?
Yeah, we don't have it, he has, he has removed it, but I do want, we are sensitive to all these issues. So, I mean, one of the things that I, somebody talked to me about, I didn't get a copy of the letter, but, was law enforcement response, the sheriff is gonna come.
Absolutely.
But we don't have his plan for five years or ten years, and I'm sure it will be a moving plan, but he's gonna take care of us. There's other things that we may just satisfy the needs or the anxiety. We may have to slow down on, and, and update our development plan.
No question.
And it's gonna be difficult on the developers. You think about developers that already bought their land and stuff, that are saying, hey, you're changing in the middle of this, but.
So, so some of the things that we're anticipating, the water infrastructure, public roads.
Public roads, that's a complaint and.
That's a huge issue for us.
We've got twenty-two foot roads out there right now.
That's right.
And they, one of the things I saw, was, it was emailed to me, was the roads aren't wide enough to pass on. Um, and I don't mean, I mean two vehicles.
Yes sir.
Uh, but that road that was built through there is a county spec road.
Correct.
I don't know if we can get better than that.
I think that's, uh, that's the top end right there, it's, it's better than any of the roads that are existing, that are public roads, that are out there.
It was dirt.
There's no question.
Mud.
Another consideration, law enforcement, you've already touched on that, that has to be addressed.
Yeah.
Fire service, we've got to address fire protection in this area, emergency response.
Yeah.
We've gotta address emergency response, this is an area of the county that's getting far removed from municipal boundaries where we would have adequate services of public safety. When you get out into the rural areas of the county, where the roads are sparser, less connected, you've got challenges in response time, did I mention ambulance service?
Yeah.
We do the very best that we can, and we got a great ambulance provider, but there are some areas of the county that are hard to get to.
We still are so far ahead of where we were when I got here.
Yeah.
It was an hour to an hour and forty-five minutes in the area they live in.
Right.
And it's twenty-five minutes now.
Yes sir. It's important that our folks understand, this board has already seen and anticipated the challenges that we face with development pressure, and we are addressing it systematically. We're going to address it systematically, and what I suspect is gonna happen is that there will be a need to slow down approved development activity until we can get our hands around the challenges. We're, we're starting with this water issue because it got thrown into our face.
Yes.
Right? And so, we're gonna start there and then systematically move to address all of the other issues. They'll be done together as much as we possibly can, but some of these may have to be done sequentially. And so, there's going to be an impact on development activity, and it's being raised to us consistently by folks that have moved out there, they're out there in residence, and so, they experience the challenges directly and personally every day. And so, their, their opinion about that matters, and we need to address.
When did we start our comprehensive land use plan update?
What, the plan, land use plan update, we try to do every five years, Jay, and it's time for us to do that. We started that process probably three months ago with CNPDD, right after we got through with redistricting.
Yeah.
Uh, we started that process, they are in the process now, are reviewing all of our land use and all of our comp plan issues. Y'all are gonna be hearing about that early in the next year.
And so, at the end of that, we'll be incorporating all these new policies that we expect to, you know, factors that we look at before we'll, will allow another development in a certain area.
Yeah, we will, that's some of the land use pieces of what we're doing, yes sir. Now, the development ordinance, Jay, can be addressed separate and apart from considerations about the land use. We can look at that at any point, but we're gonna need time, we're gonna need time to study. And I would dare say, we would be well served to get our land use plan and our comp plan in place before we start working on our development ordinances. We can work on the development ordinances at the same time, but I, I don't anticipate that we're gonna roll those out until we know what our land use plan says, okay? There's another issue, we know we have stormwater man, have y'all heard this before? How many times have you heard this? We have stormwater management issues that we have to address. We are thankfully addressing those with funds that have been made available to us that we didn't anticipate. We are addressing those, we have funds that have come to us from the state of Mississippi that are a, a testimony to the validity of the county's planned use of its own money. They've said, we want to invest with you in these issues. So, we are going to be addressing stormwater management issues, but that is a long-term, lifelong issue that we have to address over a long period of time. And much study will continue to go into those issues and how we address those, that, I, I mentioned that.
These people were really part of the first phase. They have large sprawling lots, we redirected and changed some water to where we didn't have water flowing wild, and at least it's contained, but from our roads. and at least it's contained, but from our roads. But just from the initial layout, the reason that their lots are, at least the size that they are, is because of concerns of flooding.
Yes, sir.
And the runoff that it causes for density.
Steve, you saw two things, I think I recall this conversation that we had. You saw at least a couple of things that were important. The larger lot size, not only does it help with stormwater management, it's also helpful to keep property values high.
Oh, yeah.
And, and you also were very consistent in your demand, that square footages be maximized for purposes of maintaining property values. And that has paid off. Those two demands that you made early, and by the way, the entire board has supported that development model. And so this, this is a Steve Gaines and a board issue for this particular area. I think you saw as well that because it was raw, undisturbed property, what we do on the front end is going to be the pattern and practice that we end up having to be, to, to live with for the foreseeable future. And so it was important to make sure we did it right on the front end. So the larger lots and the larger square footages were extremely important. I, I think it's important to say that the developers were responsive to that, Steve.
Yes.
They understood what you were trying to do and what the board was trying to do. And they said, "You know what? We, we think that that's probably a good plan." Yeah, would they have liked to have had smaller lots? I guarantee you they would have. Would they have liked to have had less square footage? Yes, sir. But they understood what was trying to be done here, and they bought in. And so I think they are entitled to some credit in that respect. I, I want to say also about what's on the agenda here, Steve, just to clarify for folks that are here. The applicant has withdrawn the application for rezoning. The rezoning matter will not be heard. The way that this will be handled in the future, in the event that there are questions, is the applicant will be required to submit a new application. This will not be handled as, okay, he's ready to now restart this and, and come forward on this application. He will be required to file a new application, which means that Ms. Renee will require him to send out new notification letters to adjacent property owners, which means that new placard boards will have to be placed, alerting the public that there will be a zoning consideration on the property. And so the public notice piece will have to be redone. I don't know when the applicant intends to do that, but it will be up to the applicant to start that process with the filing of a new application. I want to make that clear. So I would also say, since we're, in light of the fact that we're not going to have a public hearing on the rezoning, it would be appropriate to, to offer to anyone who is here for that matter, they are welcome to exit, they're welcome to stay, this is a public meeting. And so they're welcome to stay and listen to the rest of our board meeting, or they can take their leave and wait for notification that, that this matter will be heard at a different date. That's all I need to say.
Craig, I would like to say, the developers that I've worked with in District Four are as good as anybody anywhere. I mean, I, they, when we ask them to do whatever, they work with us. I don't have the problems that other places have. So I don't in any way want that to be reflected back on them. That's really-
All right. All right. If there's no one else here to speak in public comment, we, I think we're-
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to go in executive session for personnel. Well, you got, I'm sorry, I didn't see you stand up. Yep.
Um, would it be appropriate, could we still public comment and share the concerns of residents of the area?
Sure.
Do we have some signed up?
We got a bunch signed up.
We got two pages of them.
Okay.
Three.
I promised, uh, well-
I mean, I'd, I'd like for, I mean, if you're going to be the spokesman for all of them, that way we can address and listen to whatever you have to say.
Yes, Mr. Callahan, that's, that's what we had discussed. I'm, I'm going to do that and we just want to share that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I, I, my name is David Barton. I, I'm right at 20-year resident of Rankin County. I have lived on Stump Ridge Road about three and a half years now. So it is a fantastic place. We, we love it there, and I know that, that some of the opinions may have been in the past that, that, that we want to keep it just like it is out there. And, and I'll be honest, sometimes that is the case, right? Most of us moved out there because we like it quite, and, you know, we're not in a, not in a, a direct neighborhood. But I, our biggest concerns, and I just wanted to share those, and if y'all would just, as I understand it, there is no vote today on the rezon-
That's, that's correct. We will not entertain that today.
And we appreciate that very much, and just thank you for the opportunity for, for sharing a couple of things. Our esteemed county attorney here represented many of the things, I believe, that, that are of importance to us, and certainly including infrastructure. And I think all of us out there understand how the water is handled and that it is a water association. And, and while those are fine people on that board and, and members there, you know, we're discussing with, with them as well, because the challenges are what happens down the road, I think. And you brought that up earlier. You know, providing water is just one piece of it. Providing water to a pressure that is sustainable over a distance and in larger homes and, and that sort of thing is very important to us, and we struggle with that in some of the developments already out there. So it's some things that the water association has to work on. We just ask that the board certainly be understanding of that and realizing that there are already some issues out there. And while the county's not responsible for water, we appreciate your willingness to work and really require a little more from those associations as we move forward to, to ensure that we, we have that. I looked at, or listened to the, the meeting from two weeks ago, and I know there was a lengthy discussion there. And so I won't go into, into a lot of detail about it, specifically about erosion, soil, and silt distribution and that sort of thing. And, and I, I'm sure Mr. Gaines is, is out there, I know he's out there regularly. And some of those that, some of those that are already just beginning development or, or still underdeveloped, or they, they have been zoned, but houses haven't been sold or built there. Where the fire hydrants are, where silt and soil has, has basically covered up fire hydrants. There's a couple of, of specific ones that only the dome of a fire hydrant is still visible after that runoff. So you've got about, what, probably two and a half foot of soil movement or silt around that. And, and I'm pretty sure the fire department would struggle significantly at that point trying to, to use those facilities. But also just the infrastructure in general. We're blessed with great law enforcement and great fire, and a great fire rating in the county. And, and it is our concern that, that as we just continue to develop and, and- absolutely, I'm the, I would be the first to say, and, and, and some of my, my neighbors may not like me for saying that, but I, I am confident that eventually there will be buildings out there. Our biggest request is that the county and that the board just make sure that we look at all of these areas and that we're very intentional moving forward in those developments. Because it, it, it will impact, I think, well, I think, Mr. Gaines, and two weeks ago, you said in, in the board meeting that, that the property values out there have really, have really blossomed. And again, that's one of the reasons a lot of us moved out there is because it is a great place, and that's the case. But it wouldn't take very much for it to go the other direction, and I believe you recognized that in, in two weeks ago in the board meeting. It would take very little for that to start tanking if, if we don't have the infrastructure, the fire ratings that they are, and rapid law enforcement responses out there. So we just ask you to take a, a very close look at that and just be intentional about it. A lot of the developments, you know, the initial part of developing often is, is, I don't know what the technical term, but for the lack of, of any better, I'm going to use dirt mining. That, that's the first process a lot of times, and in Phase Two and Three, I think, of even Freedom Ridge and Freedom Farms area, that has been the case. And for those of us that are already there, that's a huge concern. Because when you start moving that dirt, a couple of things happen. First and foremost, it's, it's mess. It messes the, the roads and, and just everything in general. But that also greatly impacts the water flow and the drainage issues. We're, we're pretty good right now with drainage off the roads and the, the cover work that's been done out there, and, and that has, has really helped. Changing that water table wouldn't take much, and it'll be a completely different landscape out there. So those are our concerns. I, I know, and, and I am certainly not a politician by trade or anything else, but I, I know there has been some conversation that, that many of the, the property owners out there have, have an issue with, with Mr. Brooks. I will personally tell you, living there three and a half, he could be in this room, and I don't know what he looks like. I've nev, I've never met Mr. Brooks. So there's nothing personal about it whatsoever. We're concerned about our property values, and, and we love living in Rankin County. We love the area that we're in, and we just appreciate you, you gentlemen taking that and really looking at all those issues as we move forward. And, and, and just ask that we be very intentional with, with future developments. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Does that conclude the discussions on the rezoning on the matter that we're not taking up today?
That we're not taking up today.
If not, anyone else in public comment?
All right. Yeah, so, so what I'd like to do is, if I can, move the executive session up to the front for personnel. I'd like to make a motion to go in the executive session for personnel.
Mr. Cross has made a motion to go in the executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Gaines.
This does not mean that the board meeting is over.
It's not over.
If those who are not allowed in the executive session, which is perfectly everybody-
Now do I have a motion to go in the executive session? Motion made by Mr. Cross. Second by Mr. Gaines. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like, sign. Motion, Craig.